All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead and get this party started. We appreciate you all being here, but it's straight up six o'clock, so we're gonna start this right on time in consideration for the venue, the school, and so that we can finish everything we need to do and clear out of here at a reasonable time for Mr. Taylor. Before we get started, before we start our prayer and our pledge of allegiance, the rest of our agenda, I want to take a moment to thank Principal Will Taylor of Beulah Middle School. Will, where are you?
I'm over here.
Thank you very much, Will. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Mr. Taylor was very gracious to allow us to use this venue, and not only that, for the last seven months, he has allowed our Northwest District One Advisory Committee to use this venue and just been a great host, so we're very appreciative of the school district and Principal Taylor. All right, to get started this evening, I'm gonna go ahead and open us up with a prayer. If you'd like to join me, please stand for an invocation, and then remain standing. We'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance right shortly thereafter, directly after. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, thank you for this venue, thank you for this opportunity to get together with citizens in my community to discuss problems and to solve problems. Every day I'm thankful, every day we should all be thankful that we're here in this country, the greatest country mankind has ever seen, a place where we can freely assemble, where we have the freedom of speech, and most importantly, where we have the freedom, the free exercise of religion is one of our rights. I thank you for everything, I thank you for all your blessings, and I ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I want to thank each and every citizen for making their way out here tonight. I know it's very hectic, there's a lot going on, but it's very important that we have these meetings so that we can discuss the future of our community together, and there's been a lot going on in the county, but I want to start this meeting tonight by introducing our brand-new county administrator. She's been on the job two weeks and one day, and so we're very, very happy to have a brand-new administrator who's very familiar to many of you in the community. She comes to us from the University of West Florida. Very happy and very proud to have her here with us, and without further ado, I'd like to introduce Janice Gilly. Welcome. And Janice, if you'd like. Yeah, absolutely. You'd like to say something?
Yeah. So, born and raised in Escambia County, and so I've already recognized several faces in the audience, and so it's good to see all of you in a venue like this, because we all know that public dialogue and engagement is very important to our form of government. So I thank you all for taking the extra effort to come out tonight and do that. You have an amazing commissioner here in the standpoint that he really wants your input and your feedback, and he wants to hear from you, and I think it's really cool that he created these cards so that he can actually get immediate feedback from those of you as well. One of the things that I've been working on is what I call my Hundred Day Plan. It's where we look at the people, who we are, what we do, how we do it, and how we go forward from there. So I'm taking input from folks as well as he is taking input, and my phone number is 595-4900 if you want to call our office and leave a message for me. I'm more than happy to take any input you have on different policies, processes, and maybe programs or activities that maybe you've experienced in other communities that you'd like to see us experience here. So thank you for this opportunity, and glad you came out tonight.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you, Janice. And now, I would like to go ahead and introduce some staff that have made their way here this evening, and I want to say, the staff of Escambia County is amazing. Whenever I need anything, whenever a citizen calls me or emails me with a complaint, I send it to Debbie, and she sends it to staff, and they get the job done. They really do get the job done, and I appreciate everything they do to help things run smoothly in District One and frankly throughout the county. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce our staff that's here. If you'll just wave your hand when I recognize you. Obviously, y'all just met Janice Gilly, our brand-new administrator. Our interim assistant administrator is Mr. Chips Kirschenfeld, and he's right here. Welcome, Chips. Yeah, go ahead and stand up. In addition to being the interim assistant administrator, he's also the director of Natural Resources. Library services, Mr. Todd Humble is here this evening. Todd? Hey, Todd, welcome. Public Works Director Wes Marino is here. A lot of folks know Wes. Thanks for being here, Wes. Our interim Public Safety Director is John Dosh. John, thank you for being here. And thank you for keeping us updated on Tropical Storm Barry. We appreciate all the updates. Developmental Services, Horace Jones, the director, is here this evening. Horace, welcome. Drew Homer from Developmental Services is here as well. Thank you, Drew. Charlie Gonzalez is here. Where is he? Hey, Charlie, welcome. John Fisher is here as well. John, thank you for being here. And now, from the Engineering Department, Joy Jones, our county engineer, is here this evening. We appreciate her being here. Welcome, Joy. Colby Brown is here, Assistant County Engineer. David Forte is here, I hope. Ah, there he is. He's an important guy, you'll hear from him later. Cooper Saunders is here from Engineering. Thank you, Cooper, for being here. Scott Sanders, I see you back there. Thanks for making your way here. And we have some special guests in the house this evening. I've invited my counterparts from District One, from the ECUA, the Emerald Coast Utility Authority. We have Vicki Campbell, your District One rep. Welcome. And then, from the Escambia County School Board, your District One rep, Kevin Adams is here this evening. Kevin, welcome. Thank you for being here. State Representative Alex Andrade, who represents District Two, is supposed to be here as well. Is he, Alex, did you make it here? He called, he was running a little late, he had a five o'clock meeting, but he's gonna be here as well and bring some words to you as well. So appreciate all the staff being here, appreciate my counterparts from ECUA and the School Board being here, and at this point, I want to give the opportunity for remarks from my counterparts, and we'll start out here with the School Board member, Kevin Adams. If you want to come forward and say hello to the crowd and give some remarks, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Well, cover a few little items. I have to write down little notes, you know it's bad when I do that. One thing I want to say is that the school grades came out. Ninety-two percent of our Escambia County schools are now rated C or higher. We did have like eighteen schools that were D-level, there's only four now. So, big improvement this year. I know it's not enough, but for what Escambia County is handling in certain areas, that was a dramatic increase. So, the other issues, and we're a B district again, so score B. The other issues in District One are maybe impacting District One. We got a new elementary school that'll be going on Surranta Road. It's in the permit process, so it'll be going down there. Of course, we've already stated that we'll probably have another elementary school out here, again, Beulah Elementary is at capacity. Okay? This school will be creeping up pretty close here pretty soon, probably a year or two.
A more year.
Yeah, okay, so, long range, I know they're even talking about a high school. So, yep, we're interested inside eight too, for certain things, but the other big things we got going on in the district, we got the appointed superintendent, we're moving along on that. That wheel has already been built in the state, there's plenty of people that's got appointed superintendent, so we're looking at job descriptions and policies for the superintendent, and we just had to tweak it so it'll go along. We'll have a citizens committee. You can go to the School Board site, they've got a link where you can go up there and keep track of the timeline. We were in news a little bit the other day on the Triumph grant. It was a great contract for Triumph. It was a bad contract for citizens in Escambia County. Okay? I didn't have a warm fuzzy feeling about the first one. I really didn't have, I wasn't gonna vote yes on this one, because I have no control of who's being hired or what wages are being paid, and those things we can't control in school just. We already have an aircraft program at Georgetown. We've got sixty-seven academies, we're already the people that the rest of the state look at, so if you go by Georgetown, you see aircraft there, we're already in the business. So the only thing the grant, the Triumph grant would do was just upsize us a little bit more, but we could do it without them. For legislative items, we're gonna be going after another three percent increase on base unit allocation. We were able to raise our bus driver pay, our cafeteria, and our teachers last year. We have a historical low unemployment rate. We have to get our legislators to give us more money. Okay? So it's getting to be very competitive to hire people, especially with degrees. For two of our legislative platform items, right now, we're gonna go for elimination of the end-of-year testing, the counting of thirty percent of the student grades. No other, we're only like four states now in the United States that do that stuff. Where the kids, if they're taking algebra or geometry and other classes, they take an end-of-year test by the state, and it counts thirty percent of their grade. If you go to Georgia, you just, it's just your grade points that you make in a class, and what you make in your SAT, and you apply for Florida State University. Our kids have got a little bit more vertices than others, so we're gonna go after that. And then, real quick, I want to introduce your Rob Doss. Raise your hand. We're taking on his on hazardous pathways of schools. If anybody's been around me and Rob for a little while, we're talking about hazardous pathways of schools. Florida is number one in fatality and injuries with pedestrians. So this school here has not got a single sidewalk connecting it to a new neighborhood. Jeff knows I talk about it. So, but there's lots of different issues, there's lots of other places in Escambia County that need the same thing. So, we want to try to keep the kids safe. So with that, I think I have mentioned everything, so unless anybody's got any questions.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Kevin? He'll be up here, and he'll, I'm sure he has a business card. Thank you, Kevin, for being here. And I can tell you from experience, that's a tough job Kevin's got. It can be very oftentimes very thankless, but I appreciate your service on the School Board, Kevin, and Rob, all your time you gave to the district and the Transportation Department. I appreciate your service. All right, next up, from the Emerald Coast Utility Authority, ECUA, I'm proud to have my counterpart Vicki Campbell here, and she's brought a few updates for you as well. Welcome, Vicki Campbell.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff, for inviting me out tonight. This is really a great way for us to interact with each of you, and I interact daily with Debbie and with Jeff. Jeff will get calls about my water, and I get calls about his stormwater, so we just direct people to the different ways. It's kinda hard to understand which water everybody's in charge of sometimes, but just wanted to give you just a few updates on just a few things, and then I'll be over at a table over here with Jim Roberts. Jim, back in the back taking pictures, but Jim is our PIO. He brought some calendars and some paper bags, we'll tell you all about that. There's some recycle magnets for your refrigerator to tell you what you can and can't recycle, and I'll go over in a minute why that changes all the time. And Stacy Hayden, Stacy. Stacy is our head engineer, and if you have any engineering questions, I'm not gonna pretend to know what you're asking, so Stacy will be over here to help answer, and he's already answered one for Phil. So, I'm gonna start off with recycle. It's been a really tough year for recycle with the commodities market doing what it's doing. We hit an all-time low on commodity market with China and Russia no longer taking mixed paper, and our domestic markets are coming back, but they're not coming back as quickly as we would like. So recycle is not a moneymaker, it's a cost avoidance. Everything we recycle is not buried at the landfill, and that's forty-five dollars a ton that we're passing on those savings to the ratepayers. Recycle continues to divert enough to warrant the costs with commodities being at their lowest price ever. I don't anticipate recycling's going away, and I'm proud of every one of you, because seventy-three percent of our customers in Escambia County now recycle. The state of Florida has a goal of seventy-five percent by the year 2020, and we are well on our way. We don't currently have a contract with Santa Rosa, all of our other contracts will expire September, I think about around the twentieth, twenty-sixth of this year. That's gonna allow us to redo those contracts, and with the commodities market dip, we will redo them to make money for our ratepayers. You know, we have to stay in line with what's going on with the commodities. We're working on education, because the biggest thing with recycle is contamination. We'll tell you more about that when you come over, but you do a good job in Escambia County. Not everybody does a great job on contamination, and I think the reason you do a good job is because we do a good job on education of what not to put in the recycle can. Some counties don't do as well. I did see a really nice educational piece going out in Okaloosa last week, and we handle Okaloosa's recycle as well, and it was a very good educational piece. So we have devoted a little bit of money to education, and Jim runs around educating people all day long, every day, on what you can and can't put into that recycle can. He also educates on fats, oils, and grease and things like that. Our new compost facility is a raging success. We've won more national awards than you could ever imagine, right here in Pensacola, Florida, for a compost facility. It started out as a cost avoidance for the dryers out at the treatment plant. We mix the sludge with your yard waste that come, you know, all the yard waste, so if we ever have a hurricane, shouldn't be a big deal, we can use all that yard waste to make more compost. We're making it so fast, we can't, we can't make it fast enough. It's, every bit of it is sold. And Jim has a big aquarium full of it over there. If you want to look at it, you can pick it up, feel it, smell it, but it's won all kind, it's called Bloom, and it's won all kind of awards. In sanitation, our trucks are being replaced on a rotating basis now, every ten, ten every year. That's gonna allow us to rotate the entire fleet every eight years. We have a hundred and sixty thousand recycle and garbage cans. Right now, we are purchasing seven thousand cans per year at a cost of three hundred thousand. Everything we pay goes right back to the ratepayer. I wish I could tell you those seven thousand are enough to replace all the cans, but they're not. This county is growing so fast, we probably need to double that in the next few years. The ECUA and the Board of County Commissioners, Jeff and I have been talking about this a lot lately, are looking for a transfer station. Right now, those trucks spend a lot of time right here on Pine Forest Road, Mobile Highway, Nine Mile Road. I know you see garbage trucks out there going to the landfill. Jeff and I are looking for a location to put a transfer station, so that way, and I know we've had issues with trucks getting back to every subdivision timely, but the growth here is so large. So if we get this transfer station that he and I are working on together, when you, we'll take all those garbage trucks to a central locations a little bit south of here, somewhere in the county, and we will move all that trash from the garbage trucks to an eighteen-wheeler, and then you will have the eighteen-wheeler coming up here a couple times a day versus all those garbage trucks. And the garbage trucks can get back out and get on the road. We need five new routes right now in Beulah. So, that's something that Jeff has been working on with me. The worst escapees from the garbage truck, the flyouts, are the single-source plastic bags. If you're gonna toss them, if you would put something in them to weigh them down, or just tie about ten of them together in little knots, you know, and then they won't fly out so easy, but they're the main things. If you're driving down the road, you're gonna see on the side of the road is single-source plastic bags. Jeff, the Board of County Commissioners, ECUA, as well as the city of Pensacola, have all signed a ordinance saying that we would like to eliminate plastic bags in Escambia, those single-source little plastic bags, but that's a legislative issue, it's preemptive, and we can't do anything about it until they make it a local matter, so.
We can talk to Alex about that.
We'll talk to Alex about that. I think Alex is for it. The growth is huge in District One again. We want everybody to be on sewer, and that's in a perfect world, but there are areas that are too low for gravity sewer, so we are working with the developers on alternatives. One of the alternatives that we've used in District One and a couple of subdivisions up here are grinder pumps. The only thing with grinder pumps, I would say, is, do you know what a flushable wipe is? There you go. I disagree too. I totally disagree. A grinder pump is a pump at your individual homes that grinds up, and it acts like a mini lift station, and it pushes it up and over into the sewer system. So the problem is that flushable wipes, I beg of you to Google it when you go home, and flushable wipes are wreaking havoc nationwide on every sewer, on all sewer systems. There is no such thing as a flushable wipe. I would love for them to be outlawed. So what happens is, they won't lift up and over, so it's causing our lift stations, the power for those lift stations has gotten so expensive, poor developers are having to spend six hundred thousand dollars for a lift station, four hundred to six hundred, according to the size. So, that's upping the cost. It's kind of a catch-22. We wanted more jobs, we got more jobs. Now we need affordable homes. So it's hard in some areas, if they're only building thirty-six houses, to put in a six hundred thousand dollar lift station. So, and here's the worst part about that, if you're building under fifty lots, the Health Department will allow you to put in septic tanks. Okay, I don't like grinder pumps, but I hate septic tanks even worse, because they leach into the sand and gravel aquifer root, which is where I'm getting your water. So I'd rather have a grinder pump than a septic tank, and I'm not in charge of saying you can't do that. The Health Department will allow it if they can't reach water. So, I worked with a developer today, he said that the guy next door wouldn't let him have an easement, and I said, well, let me go talk to him, and let me see if I can get an easement. So we are working very hard to get everyone on a sewer, gravity sewer, but you will see some of the grinder pump subdivisions. And all I ask of the developers, and all that Jeff asks of the developers, is that we do proper disclosure. I don't want anyone buying a house and not being told that they're buying a grinder pump, because it might have to be replaced in five or ten years. So, you know, well, some of them, the best ones are ten, the others are... And I don't have anything else, but I'll be over here if you want to ask any questions. I'm more than happy to answer any question that you might have.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you again, Jeff.
We appreciate, we appreciate our counterparts from the other entities being here tonight. Now, they asked me to turn up the volume, so this, where's the volume? Is that it? That ain't it? Is that it? Nope. Oops. Can you hear me now? There we go. How about that? Is that where we? Okay. Can y'all hear it? Can y'all hear me back there? All right. All right. Well, we appreciate that. I don't see Alex Andrade, did he make it here? What I'll do, when he makes it in, folks, I'll give him an opportunity to say hello to you as well. He's got some ideas for the upcoming legislative session. Did a lot of great things this past legislative session. He carried a lot of appropriations bills, which is the heavy lift. You know, it's very easy to go over there and put bills up that'll never pass, but it's a heavy lift to go take the appropriations bill and carry the water, and he did a great job of that. I'm a real fan, so I look forward to him coming in. Meanwhile, we're gonna jump right into this, and we're gonna go through these very, very quickly. If you've come in just late, remember upfront to grab one of these cards, because we're gonna do a little lightning round, a little instant feedback from my constituents, and what we'll do, we'll go through the questions and then, you know, just hold it up, agree if you agree with it, disagree. I hate to contradict one of my counterparts, but I will say this, I've lived here fifteen years, I've got an acre lot, I've got a septic system that works like a charm. I like my septic system, it works very well. I like my ECUA bill being low and with a septic system, so when it comes to getting rid of the septic, you know, here's my instant feedback to that, right? See, we can have fun with this, a little bit. All right, let's talk about the budget. Last year, ladies and gentlemen, we had a good year, we increased about four and a half percent. This year, we had another very good year. The tax roll has increased, it looks like our budget's gonna jump from four hundred and seventy-five million last year to about four hundred and ninety-one million this year. That is if the Board of County Commissioners does not go back to the rollback rate. Now, what that would mean is, that would mean we would have to, if we went to the rollback rate, we would go back and we would lower the millage rate such that we recouped no additional money over the previous year. I don't anticipate that we will do that. We will keep the rate flat on your house, and that'll generate more income, so we'll have to advertise a tax increase, but between you and me, I don't believe that's a tax increase. What, to me, an increase is when you raise my rate. You raise my rate, then you've raised my taxes. If I keep the rate steady, I don't believe that that's a tax increase. So, I'm happy to do it, we need the money, and we'll go through reasons why we need the money later as we get through this, but that's where we're at on the budget. September tenth, we'll have a hearing downtown if you'd like to come. You know, it's interesting, we have a big budget, nearly half a billion, and, you know, I saw the same thing when I was on the School Board. Not many citizens come out, and the School Board budget's a lot bigger than the counties, and Kevin can attest to the fact that you'd have one or two people come, and we'd be doing a seven hundred million dollar budget for our schools. So, you know, the county is no different, very few people come and speak to the budget. So, I'd like to invite you to learn about our budget, learn about where your tax dollars go. They go a lot of different directions in this county, and be a part of the process if you'd like to be. And again, I thank you all for being here tonight. Next, let's talk about our jail. The jail blew up in 2014. It took the Board of County Commissioners numerous years to decide where they wanted to put the new jail. They did that, they made that decision right before I came on the board in late 2016. Since that time, we've went out to bid, solicited, signed the contract, it's under construction. If you've been over in the area, you see it going up. It is on schedule, we had a slight delay of about two weeks, I believe is what it is, but it will be done June of next year, and that'll be a great thing, because meanwhile, we're spending between four and five million dollars a year sending our inmates over to Walton County, because we don't have enough space in our current jail. So, it'll be nice when we turn off that money vacuum, and we keep the money here, and we put the prisoners here, so that's what's going on with the jail. Public beach access has been a big issue for me. Obviously, District One does not have Gulf access, but we do have Perdido Bay, we do have some waterfront communities, but the Board of County Commissioners in 2013 purchased three hundred feet on the Gulf of Mexico, right next to the Crab Trap out there, and they purchased it with money for habitat conservation for the beach mice, but also seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars was for public beach access. Well, that never happened. It didn't happen. So this past year, we've kind of turned that project back on, and that's moving forward. I spoke to the folks in environmental who are working that process, and it looks as though, I don't want to speak out of turn, but it looks as though, it looks as though we will have as many as forty-four spaces, parking spaces out there, and being in full compliance with everything we need to do to protect the beach mouse and the habitat and the dunes. So if you agree that when the Board of County Commissioners votes and spends money for public beach access, that the beach access should be open, let me know if that's what you agree with. If you disagree, let me know. I see a lot of green out there, quite happy about that. You see, I grew up in Pensacola, and my dad and I used to go fishing out there, and we used to be able to walk up and down that beach. There was a junior food store out there. I don't know if anyone remembers that. You go out there now, and there's no trespassing signs on the beach. So for me, we got three hundred feet on the beach, even though it's not my district, we've spent the money to do it, I'm gonna push till we get it open. So, I said, the initial timeline was it was gonna be open in July. Well, that didn't happen. It looks like it may not open until the winter, but when it does open, I will be out there. Even if I have to do the polar bear plunge, I'm going out there. You can disagree with that if you want to, or you don't want to see it, but I'll do it. All right, so that's what's going on with that. Now, let's talk about a subject that we've all heard about, and the news media's kind of jumped on, the traffic at Pensacola Beach. That's in District Four, Commissioner Bender's district, and I want to publicly thank him for taking a leadership position. I had an idea, you know, we can't talk to one another outside of these meetings, we're in our silos because of the sunshine law and things of this nature, so, you know, I go out to the beach at least on a weekly basis to play tennis, and I just love the beach, and I thought of an idea, and he thought of an idea, and we were in our own silos, but he took the leadership role, he worked with the Traffic Department, and they've done a couple weekends in a row where they've opened it up, and what we've learned from that is, we've learned that what I knew and what I thought was true was that that toll booth is the holdup. It's the holdup. People say, well, it's parking, it's this, it's that. It's not, it's that toll booth, and this proves it. I mean, you've got like from a fifty-minute wait time a couple weeks ago to like fifteen minutes now. I was out there Friday night, no problem. So, I want to commend publicly Commissioner Bender, we're gonna talk about this Thursday, about putting that into a plan, because he's been kind of testing a couple different things here and there, but we're gonna try and formulate it into an official plan. Personally, I'd like to see the toll go away. When I was a kid, we threw thirty-five cents in the basket, it was supposed to go, if, well, I don't know, I don't want to step on my counterpart's toes, but I would only say it needs to go away if we can recoup the revenue some other way, because that money that we get is tied to a bond that goes till 2032, which was put out to resurface by the Luna, so we can't really just say, hey, forget about it, we'd have to recoup the revenue. But I wanted to say that because we all go to the beach, right? This is District One, but we all go to the beach, and although it's in Commissioner Bender's district, it's a county-wide asset.[1682.12] Next up, Pensacola Beach, Pensacola Bay Bridge naming. As everyone in this room probably is aware of, the, the new bridge is coming up, and, and there was a push to name it for a deceased former resident of Pensacola, a great guy, hero, American hero, General Chappy James, first four-star admiral, or four-star general in the Air Force, African-American, just a great hero. And so, Commissioner Bender put together a committee. Santa Rosa County voted to, to change the name to Chappy James. City of Pensacola did the same thing, but Gulf Breeze and Escamia County wanted to give citizens the opportunity to put input. So, we formed a committee, put the committee together. They had three public meetings, overwhelming support for Chappy James. And so, in case you haven't heard, it's, it's already a done deal. Senator Broxton has filed that, so... And listen, I just want to say, my, I was, I was a commissioner who did not support it because I did not like the fact that in order to do that, we had to pull the previous person's name off. And that family came to me and they, they, this is their one and only monument, and their, their grandfather served in the Senate, their father served in the Senate, both their uncles served in the war. This was their family memorial, even though most people didn't know it was named for Senator Beal. And I grew up here, I have to say, I've always known that bridge as the Three Mile Bridge. I wasn't, you know, you, you go by, by, pass the sign, go on quick, heading to the beach, you don't really pay attention. But that was my only issue with that. I didn't, I don't like to tear down monuments and memorials. I'll never support doing that. And in, in some respects, by honoring Chappy the way we've done, we've, we've removed a memorial to this family. But I said I would support whatever the committee came up with. That's what they came up with, so it will have my support this Thursday when we vote, and I believe it will be unanimous. So, that's that, and that's the end of that. ECAT. Okay. I want to talk a little bit about ECAT. Right now, we are in, we are in negotiations and bargaining with their union. And later today, I've got a couple of questions about ECAT that I'll be looking for instant feedback on. But as it stands right now, you must, you might have read in the media that there's a few safety issues that some of the drivers were concerned, so they came to the board and talked about adding some Plexiglas dividers, and they wanted us to spend about $200,000 to do it. I got to tell you, you know, I was concerned about it because it looked, these things looked awfully flimsy. They looked like a fifth-grade boy or a 51-year-old like me just go right through like a knife through butter. So, I wasn't interested in spending that money, but during that discussion, the county attorney did point out the fact that if you in the state of Florida are a legal concealed weapon permit holder, you can come on our buses all day long with a weapon. We don't even have the ability to stop you from doing it. We've been preempted by the state. The drivers, some of them feel unsafe, and so I asked a very, very rational question, which was, "Well, if you have a concealed permit, can you as a driver carry your weapon?" I mean, how would you like to be the last driver on the shift with some folks in the back? I mean, things, bad things happen. And anyway, that wasn't well received, so I don't think it will happen, but I just want to give you a little bit of the context about the conversation because sometimes the media stories don't get it exactly right. But to me, it was a logical question. Citizens can come onboard with their concealed carry permit, but the drivers, we've told them, the county has said, "You cannot, even if you're a former military and you have a permit." So, I don't know how I feel about it. I know I don't feel like spending 200 grand for Plexiglas that I don't think would stop anything, so we'll stay tuned as that moves forward. The fire department. We are also bargaining with our fire department. The fire department has put together a, an ambitious five-year plan. Right now, we fund it about $19 million a year for the county and for the Pensacola Beach Fire Station. And we generate that money from your property tax bill, from an MSBU of about $125 on all of our houses. Now, the new five-year plan is fantastic. It's very aspirational. It looks to add dozens and dozens of additional paid career firefighters, but unfortunately, it's, it's a cost. It's a big cost, going from 18, 19 million up to over $30 million. So, I don't know that it's affordable to do it. I will say this, and I've said this at every audience I've ever been at, I support our volunteer firefighters. Beulah has a great volunteer station right over here, great guys. Many of them work full-time, their full-time jobs that they get paid for is as a firefighter, and they come and they volunteer their time for Escamia County and their community. So, there's going to be some, a tug-of-war on that. We've grown that entity. We're up to about 166 paid, 151 paid staff. I don't know, can someone check that number for me? John, do you know what the number is?
169.
169. Okay. I was all over the place. We're about 169 paid career firefighters throughout the county. But there will be some, I think there's going to be a tug-of-war on that. We'll see what happens. Let me just say this, I'm not raising your property taxes. I'm not going to do it. I've never done it in 13 years, elected official, didn't do it 10 years on the school board, even though I was lobbied heavily to do it during the recession. I never voted to raise your year-over-year military rates. Not going to start now. I think there's other ways we can fund it, and we could talk about that too later, and I'll get some instant feedback. But I think governments, my philosophy, governments have to live within their means, just like families do. And if we're, if we want to fund that, we should combine EMS with fire, and instead of pulling 2 to 3 million every year out of the EMS reserve to fund other parts of our budget, I think we need to put that money in a lockbox, put those two entities together and keep that money in public safety. So, that's what I'm going to, as your county commissioner, that's what I'm going to lobby to do before I put additional tax burden on property owners in Escamia County. Final thing I want to talk about now, Chips, do you mind coming up here? This is Chips Kirschenfeld. He's a kind of run point on this one. We've got several Triumph projects in the works. Obviously, the Triumph comes out of the BP oil spill, $1.5 billion targeted to the Panhandle of Florida for environmental restoration and economic development. Both of the projects in District One, I inherited when I came into office, but I'm happy to say both of them are well on their way. South Dog Track Drainage Project is underway, and I believe we're putting it out to bid. That's coming up very soon. And the OLF-8 Commerce Park, we've taken the money out of that project and put it into the airport for jobs. We put that on ST Aerospace, and we've done a deal with Navy Federal Credit Union. They're going to pay for the master plan of OLF-8. So, we shifted that money, and that was a good thing. But I wanted Chips to give an update on all the Triumph projects and all the Restore Act projects, if you'd give a brief update. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Representative Andrade is here. I just saw him come in, so we'll get him up here. The, the good news is, even, even though the Deepwater Horizon oil spill was a tragedy, one of the, the worst environmental disasters here in the United States, if not the world, the good news is that the, the funding resulting from the settlement agreement in 2015 has started to, to move. And Escamia County has been the recipient of over $100 million of that Restore funding from the Deepwater Horizon oil spill. That money has gone to provide for the construction of over 30 projects in Escamia County, everything from new boat ramps, like the Wilson Robertson Boat Ramp here, the, a new boat ramp that's being designed right now in here in Bayou, also a new mahogany mill boat ramp in Bayou Chico. There's been sand dune and revegetation projects on both Perdido Key as well as Pensacola Beach. There have been water quality improvement projects, stormwater projects all over the county that have been funded, including the design that's underway now for projects on 11 Mile Creek. So, there, there's been a multitude of projects that have been done. One of the, the projects that is pending before the Triumph Board, we have submitted an application to do the design and also the infrastructure improvements for OLF-8 once that master plan is developed. And that has the promise of, of many, many new jobs in association with that Triumph grant that we hope to receive soon after the master plan is developed. So, we do have another 12 years of funding that we expect coming to Escamia County for many of these environmental projects, water quality improvement projects, beach access projects. So, we'll keep you advised of those projects as they come through.
Thank you, Chips. I appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right. So, he's the guy that runs point on all those. And I will say, now that, at the last meeting that we had, now that both of my previous projects are well in the pipeline, well, I'm moving forward with the next one. And the next one will be to utilize the funding from Restore to help defray the costs of the planning that we're doing out here in this part of District One. We're either going to do a master plan or an overlay district. That's, and we'll talk a little bit about it when I talk about the Northwest District One Advisory Committee, but that money, the funding source hadn't been identified, and I had a discussion with Chips, and that's certainly a usable pot of money for that. So, I'll be lobbying my counterparts on the board for that to be my next project with the Restore Act. And so, and with that, that's the countywide issues of importance. And so, now we were going to seg, we were going to segue right into this area, the Northwest District One, this section of District One is the biggest and the fastest-growing part of the county. There's no question about it. I've lived here 15 years, and I can tell you, many of you have lived here a long time and have seen it. I know Kevin's lived here since like the 1800s. When did you move here, Kevin? When did you?
Four generations.
Four generations. So, he's seen it too, but it has really exploded, really in the last 10 years, and, and, you know, it, it's created a lot of issues, frankly, and a lot of these issues I deal with every day with the traffic. I know that you all do too. I live on Nine Mile Road and fight that traffic every single day. But we put together a committee. The Board of County Commissioners voted to impound this committee, and it was a committee made up of volunteers. And I want to thank them. We've been meeting for the last eight months, and several, several of them are present, but I want to thank each and every one of them for serving. We've got a lot of work done. Right now, we have put together a survey, and I'll talk about it in just a minute, but I want to, I would be remiss, I certainly would be remiss if I did not recognize the folks that have stepped up to serve on that committee. So, for Kimberly Aderhold, who works at Navy Federal Credit Union, Dr. Laura Bryant, Paul Flores, Jay Ingwell, Jill Johnson, George Levy, David Lipton, Joseph Poitewen, and Wilson Taylor, our principal of this school, have all stepped up and they've served on the committee. We're at a point now with that committee, and I'm going to segue right into that, that they have developed a questionnaire that is going to be, within the next week, it's going to be mailed out to 4,600 households that are in this area. And on that mailing, you will have a link to a survey. And the survey is live right now. If you are registered to vote and you have an email address on file, you will have already received a letter and a notification and a link to go take the survey. And without getting too far ahead, do we have a survey questions? No. Well, the survey is very short. It's about eight questions, and there's a lot of multiple choice. There's, there's an opportunity to, to write your own other in if you don't like the, the choices. Right now, the update that we got today was 175 residents of this area have already completed the survey, so that's really good. I'm told we have to get a minimum of 400 for it to be statistically valid, so we're moving in the right direction. After it's mailed out, the survey will be open for another two weeks. So, I would encourage you, please, take the survey. We're going to take that, we're going to bring it back to the committee, and then whatever we do with this part of the district in terms of managing the growth and planning it, we're going to incorporate those comments. And we're also going to incorporate charrettes and lots of public meetings. This is not something I'm going to do. This is something that we need you to do as the citizens that live out here. I mean, I'm a part of it. I live here with you, but I, but this is a citizen-driven thing, and so I would just encourage you, when you get that survey, be it via an email or a postcard, please take the survey. And also, if you have an issue, if you have an issue, in fact, we had a call just today at the office, gentleman did not have a phone, did not have access to a computer, so we're going to put him in charge, we're going to put him in touch with UWF. They're running the survey, and we're going to find a way to accommodate him. So, if you have a special need, if, at all, call my office. I will put you together with the folks that run the survey because we want to hear from you. We want your voice to be heard as part of the process. Before I get too deep into this, our state representative from District Two has made it here, and I, and I certainly want to bring him up and give him an opportunity to speak with you. Alex, I appreciate everything you did last session. Thank you for being here tonight. Please welcome Alex Andrade. He's our state rep from District Two.
Thank you for Commissioner Bregash for letting me come and speak for a second. I, like all of you, I'm here to, to learn more about our county and hopefully offer some support if we think our leaders in the room, like Kevin Adams and Janice Gilli and Vicki Campbell, and of course, Commissioner Bregash, if we think they're going in the right direction, obviously, continue to support them and work together as a community to move our county forward. My name's Alex Andrade. I'm the state representative for House District Two. That's Escamia County, mostly south of I-10. That includes the entire coastline of Escamia County and a little bit of Gulf Breeze. And so, the only thing I want to say tonight, and before we get back to the, the programming that, it looks like you've done an excellent job, Commissioner. The only thing I want to say is, my, my cell phone number is 850-462-4776. If you have an issue that you think the state might be better equipped to resolve for you, please don't hesitate to call my cell phone or my, my district office because it's our responsibility to work for you as well. So, thank you guys for being here, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Alex. As I say, he, he had, he had a great session and got a lot of things done, and we're really appreciative of his service. Look forward to this year and all the stuff you're going to do for us in Tallahassee as well. Okay. So, we talked about Restore Act Triumph, so I'm going to give an update on OLF-8. I know that we have some comments, and before I go too deep into that, I want to let everyone know, we have comment cards up here. If you'd like to speak or just have a question read, we've got a microphone here when we get to that section. If you've submitted a card, I'm going to call you up. You can make your statement or ask your question. If I can't answer it, there's staff members, the Brain Trust is here. We will get an answer for you. If they can't get the answer for you tonight, then we will research it and we will get back to you. But I want to make sure that you leave tonight knowing two things, that we've listened and we've responded. And if we don't know the answer, we will get you the answer. And that's, that's what I want the takeaways to be from tonight's meeting. So, let's talk a little bit about OLF-8. The Board of County Commissioners, as I mentioned before, we had a $1.5 million Restore Act project to master plan OLF-8. Now, when I came into office in late 2016, the plan had been developed before I got here to create jobs with that, with that field. Ran into some resistance, so we doubled back, and we worked with the, with Navy Federal Credit Union, with residents throughout the area, a lot of homeowners association, including Nature Trail, which is a big group. A lot of the homeowners groups wanted a say in what was going to happen, and so we crafted a compromise document. The thing is, if we create jobs on that field, if we create jobs, a minimum of 1,000, we're in the running for up to a $30 million Triumph Grant. And that's not a hypothetical. We just, we just put together a $220 million Triumph Grant at the airport. I was proud to be a part of that. And so, that's going to happen. We're going to bring 17,000 jobs there. So, there's a lot of money at stake for us not to totally get away from the idea of creating some jobs on that field. So, we decided on a compromise. All options are on the table. We're going to master plan it. Whoever we end up selecting knows that there's, all options are on the table. Input from the citizens is going to be taken. You know, we, we've got to maintain at least 1,000 jobs, you know, good jobs on that site, but it's a big field, 636 acres. There's room. What I tell people is, I didn't get 100% of what I wanted. No one's going to get 100% of what they want, but together, if we all get a little something and we're able to maintain that Triumph money and bring that back to Pensacola, then I think that would be a win for everyone. My only thing, and I will say this, I was not a fan of building any residential on that field because we've got the private market, the private sector is doing a good job of that in Beulah as it is, and I certainly don't want the government to compete with the private sector. And we've got, frankly, we've got too much residential already. So, that was my only, but I got overruled. You know, it's, it's not King Jeff.[1542.51] So that was my only, but I got overruled, you know, it's not King Jeff, there's five of us up on the board, and I got overruled. So, all options are on the table, the good news, the takeaway, the silver lining, whatever you want to say, is we're still in there for the 1,000 jobs. And I will just say, before I leave the topic, you know, we deal with the traffic every single day, but if we have nicely constructed buildings out there, and the whistle blows at 8, and the whistle blows at 5, you got people coming in, at least it's a predictable flow. If it's a bunch of condos and townhomes and residences, you've got two or three cars at every place going every which direction all day long, even on the weekends. So, you know, I hope that the master planner, when they come in, will look at all that, because traffic is a big issue, and we're gonna talk about traffic in just a moment. But, so that's what's going on with that. I told you before that we had a $1.5 million Restore Act project, we moved that money to keep ST Aerospace in the game, there was a $1.5 million shortfall, and Navy Federal Credit Union agreed to fund the master plan. So that was good. Again, they're putting their own money in to the deal, the Board of County Commissioners has the final say, I just want to make sure everyone knows that. Just because Navy Federal is paying for it, we have not given up control of the process. We had eight firms from around the country that had competed for the bid, we've narrowed it down to three, we had a presentation two weeks ago, very good firms, Atkins North America, right here, their office locally, we've got Duane, DPZ, out of Miami, they're very good, ASD Sky out of Atlanta, they're a part of it, all three of those firms more than capable of doing the job, and we'll see, the board's gonna make a vote, we've got a very, very complex score sheet, but we weren't, we didn't have all the information after the presentation, so look for that to happen soon. And then once that happens, look for public meetings out here in Beulah for you to participate in, because again, that's a public asset now. We spent 17.5 million dollars over a decade to get that property from the United States Navy, it was not an easy task, it took a lot of hard work, and again, we, you know, we sought that to create jobs, things changed, I get it, now we have to be adaptable, but we've got that property, and it's gonna be a good asset. We have sold 100 acres to Navy Federal already for 4 million, we're in the process of getting that money back, and that money will go right back into a local option sales tax, so we can do different projects with that as well. So, that's what's going on with OLF-8. I'm very, very proud of the fact that we will open a library in District 1. And Todd, if you want to come up and just give a very brief update, Todd has worked very hard to do this, we've identified a property, I think recently we've, did we contract it out? I'll let you give the update. Okay, this is Todd Humble.
Good evening. Yeah, just a few weeks ago, the Board of County Commissioners approved our selection for a design firm, we're in the process of cutting that requisition, but we're currently working with that firm, Stoa, on some other library projects, so we've already talked a little bit. We both agree on a direction of something along the lines of a park-like theme, you know, feel of bringing the outside in to the facility. If you've, where the property is, is by Bellevue Elementary, there used to be an old Wells Fargo there, the structure, we bought that property. It has, you know, a lot of good options for us, a lot of parking already present, it's got its own turnoff lane, if you're not familiar, it's next to the fairgrounds. And, you know, we should have that up, ready for bid before the end of the year, and then depending on the construction market, hopefully less than a year to get it built.
What about the funding? Tell them about the funding.
So the funding, we already have reserves, it's been saved up since 2013 to go towards this project, so there'll be no additional draws against any county-county funding, it's from your MSBU that you all pay, as long as your property owner's here in Escambia County. And we appreciate that, and we're gonna stay within our means. We're aiming to design something approximately the size of Tryon. If I can build it bigger, we will, but the construction market, that's probably gonna be about the size we can get, is what's at Tryon, but with ample parking. And also with the ability to have a playground, if you've been to Tryon, you know, they've got the playground and park behind, we will have similar amenities at the Bellevue property. There is a sign out there now that was put up just recently, we are servicing that site twice a month, the first and third Saturdays, so you can request items and we'll deliver them there to you. It's 2:00 PM, first and third Saturdays, and you'll be seeing a big yellow van there, and the gentleman there, he'll bring things, he'll also bring craft projects for kids. We haven't done that at that particular site right now, because we're not going inside the building, but we will be doing that soon. We've got a pop-up tent ordered and a few other things.
So when does it open, Todd?
Approximately a year and a half from now, if construction is good, so.
Thank you for that update, appreciate that, Todd. All right, year and a half from now? Yes, that's good news, really. We are the only district that didn't have a library, some districts have multiple libraries, so that was one of the things I wanted to get on right away. And frankly, Bellevue Elementary School, Bellevue Middle School, those are schools that will really benefit from this library, the communities in flux, working-class communities in the schools, obviously Kevin knows the challenges that we have over there, so I'm really excited. And for Beulah, you know, it's a lot closer than going to Tryon or all the way down to the southwest branch, so it's closer, it's not in Beulah, it's not out here, but it's still a very important addition to District 1 that's coming. But let's talk about something right here in Beulah, that I'm also working on a project, the Beulah Fire Station. Obviously, we, God bless these firefighters, these volunteers, been out here for many, many years, decades, and they built that. The county has purchased that from them, and we're in the process of closing that transaction. We set aside the money, $300,000, to purchase that building, that property, about seven months ago, and it's been a process. We've got all the paperwork we need, except for one, one resolution from the corporation, so I'm putting pressure on folks to get that done, I want to bring that in for a landing, because the good news behind that is, there's a $1.5 million fund set aside for replacement, and I've committed $2 million of my discretionary toward the next library, whatever it looks like, whether it's a renovation, remodel, so we've got $3.5 million in a kitty for that location. That's a great location, he can easily get all the way down Nine Mile Road, everyone knows where it is, and I would just want to make this pronouncement again, while everyone's here, as long as I'm in this seat, that's gonna be a station that's run by volunteers, volunteers, and then until they pull the switch and say, "We can't handle it." So my anticipation is, once we get it redone, they will be the operators of that, not unlike how we do John R. Jones Park, there's an organization, a 501(c)(3) that runs it, and if necessary, we'll bring in a daytime professional crew. But I'm not gonna leave the volunteers high and dry, that station has plenty of volunteers. Matter of fact, I see one of our volunteers here right now, Beau, say hi to everyone, there's Beau Rodrick here in the back, he's one of our firefighters, welcome and thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. Look, we respect and we love all firefighters, first responders of every stripe, they, you know, they run into burning buildings, they run, when gunfire's going off, they're going toward it, God bless them. In Escambia County, it's just, it's kind of in flux, for many, many years, it was all volunteer, and then the growth happened, right? So now we have all this growth out here, and, you know, there's a push to make, to make the entire department, a career department, and it's, you know, as I said before, it's a very expensive proposition. But I will say this, I think there's a way to integrate the career with the volunteers, and it really hasn't happened. I mean, there's some, there's been some, what's the word I want to use? I can't use the word I want to use, or else I'll get in trouble. Let's just say, there's been some tension, there's been some tension. But I think with, and right now, you know, we, our fire chief, we've had some issues there as well, I'll just use that word, because I can't use the word that I want to use without getting in trouble. Once we get the right leadership, I'm confident we can integrate the volunteers, use them effectively, where, and where they're working very well, I want to leave them there, because the fiscal side of me says this, the volunteers get a $400 a month stipend, right? A career guy, you have to pay his salary, you have to pay his benefits, but not only that, you have to, a tremendous amount of money goes into the Florida retirement system to fund their very expensive retirement. I want them to earn it, if we need them, but I want to keep as many volunteers out there working, because that saves us a lot of money. And again, I've given you my philosophy on raising taxes, I don't want to raise taxes. I think we need to live within our means. So that's kind of where I'm at, I don't want to make sure I'm on the record. I support the volunteers, I support career, but a station out here in Beulah, I want to keep it a volunteer as long as we have enough volunteers to make it work, and I believe that we do, based upon what I've seen and what I've, and the folks that I've spoken with. So, now we'll move on to the next issue, Nine Mile Road. I want to say this, that's a state project, I just want to say, even though I'm, this isn't a county project, right?
What was that? My phone number?
Yeah, hey, I have it, email my office, in fact, do you want, do you want the number of the project manager? Yeah, yeah, right? Just email the office, I'll get it to you. No, you know, in all seriousness, guys, it's, what's that?
It's a date.
A date, okay, he wants to know the date. They've changed the deal on me now, but by November, the latest deal now, now David, he's over there watching everything I say, because, in fact, David, why, I'm sorry, man, you gotta come on up, I gotta bring David in. That, remember earlier when I said he's an important guy? He's the guy that knows all about this stuff, so that's why he's so important, plus he's a pretty cool guy. I'm told that November, from the interstate exit, exits, five, exit five, up to the first stoplight will be completed by November, this November, and then March of the following year, it will go all the way to Beulah Road. That's what I'm told, it was supposed to be all of it done by next summer, but that's kind of where it slipped to, you want, unless I'm wrong about that, is that right? Okay, so November, it'll be four lane from the interstate to the first Navy Federal light, and then March, it'll be done all the way. And then the other segment over, heading toward Highway 29 will be the following, the following year or later in 2020?
Fall of 2020.
Fall of 2020, okay?
You want to keep that in for six more minutes?
Well, I don't know, yeah. You know, did I tell you all that that's a state project? That's a state project, I've just gotta make sure that everyone understands, you know, I mean, it's easy to want my head on a stick, but believe me, that's a state project, and so I have limited control. But I am, I will say this, I will say this, it's frustrating when these projects don't happen quickly, and many of you all have lived here a long time, like I have, remember when they were redoing 110? Remember that nightmare of the temporary lane changes and everything, it was just a nightmare, it was a, but man, when they finished that thing, wasn't that the greatest thing ever? That freeway I-10 is amazing, it just takes time to get them done. And here's an example right here at Beulah Road and Mobile Highway, how long did we wait for that light? How awesome is that light? Let me tell you what, I live on Nine Mile Road, and I used to drive down Beulah and make the left, when all three of my kids went to Beulah Elementary, and it was nerve-wracking, trucks going through, there was a lot of wrecks. Do you know they pulled the funding for that project? They pulled it, March of 2017, I got an email saying, "Hey, by the way, here's some projects that got re-appropriated," I think was the word they used, and one of them was that light at Mobile Highway. And thank God for Frank White, he's no longer our state rep, Frank White, Doug Broxen, Clay Ingram, they went to Red Alert with me, and we got that project reinstated, and David was right there, and Colby helped, and now look at it. I mean, that's what happens, they were gonna pull that money, we got it back, and now we got the light. And it took a long time to do it, but look how nice it is, and I'm telling you, when we're done with this Nine Mile Road, guys, it's gonna be the 90% solution, I'm telling you. Double the traffic's gonna flush going through, looking a little further down the line, when we get the second interchange up Isaac's Lane, half the traffic is gonna go that direction. So, it's just, it's very frustrating, we can never build these things, the state can never get it done quick enough to keep us from being inconvenienced, but I want you to know, there are staff members, myself and others, state reps, people pushing, it's just, it's, sometimes it feels like pushing a rope uphill. But, with that said, just remember one thing from this discussion, that's a state project, not a county, not a county project. All right, thank you, David. All right, here we go, oh, David, David, I'm sorry, man, can you come back? I forgot, I forgot the next thing on the list. Will you tell the folks about what we're doing on Mobile Highway with the lighting project? Why don't you bring that to their attention? There's been some tremendous wrecks on Mobile Highway, Eight Mile Creek, Klondak, Millview, Dave and I put our heads together, and I'm excited about a project, and he'll tell you more about it, what's gonna happen here in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner David Forte, Escambia County Engineering Department. Just as the Commissioner said, we are aware of the safety concerns along Mobile Highway, we're with our counterparts at FDOT and Gulf Power. I believe that this Thursday's Board of County Commissioner meeting, we hope to get the approval from the other four commissioners to set aside the funding to install additional new traffic lights at Millview Road.
Streetlights, street, not traffic.
Streetlights, sorry. Millview Road, Klondak Road, and Eight Mile Creek Road along Mobile Highway, so that's something that can relatively be done within an amount of, maybe a month or two after board approval. So this fall, we should hopefully see some additional streetlights along Mobile Highway. I know DOT actually plans to resurface that stretch of Mobile Highway as well in FYI, I think, their fiscal year 2022, so there'll be some additional improvements coming our way for Mobile Highway and the greater Beulah area from our counterparts at FDOT.
Thank you very much, David, thank you for being here. Appreciate that. So yeah, we're gonna have some lights out there, and I'm, I'll tell you guys, some of you are probably aware, there was a tragic accident out there, it was because it's such a dark stretch of road, and it happened about a year ago, and a young man named Kyle Harrison played baseball with my son at West Florida Tech, lost his life, he had pulled over to help someone, another young lady out there, another driver came and didn't see him, and so, there's been many wrecks out there, and if we can make this happen, I want to make it happen, I want to light up those intersections, and so that's happening, and I appreciate Dave and the staff working with me on that, and it's really incredibly, it's very inexpensive, I'll use that word. I was shocked at how little it's gonna cost us and the benefit, and one final story about that, in 2015, when I was still on the school board, I attended an event on Massachusetts Avenue, Governor Rick Scott was here at GBSI, which is a company, over there, tech company, and on the way home that night, I was coming back, and I went Mobile Highway and going right through Eight Mile Creek, the intersection there, the car directly in front of me, directly in front, I was behind him, he was right in front of me, dark, so out of nowhere, someone came out and took the front of his car out, I mean, I was right there, I witnessed it, I pulled over, called 911, people came out, the guy was injured very badly, he was in a Jeep, so, I mean, I've seen that, we've seen enough wrecks out there, we're gonna light up those areas, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. It's my understanding, sometimes people don't like that, they get mad if there's lights, but we're gonna go ahead and do it for the greater good of the people, and if anyone has complaints about it, they can call my office, and I'll tell them about Kyle Harrison, that's what I'll tell them about. Beulah Interchange, David, do you want to come up once more and tell us the exact timeframe? Now, this is another state project, remember, state project. I'm sorry, man, I'm running you, working you. And again, you know, staff, they don't have to be here, I'm so appreciative of them tonight. Let's give it up for all the staff that took their time to be here tonight. And I want to thank Hannah Fernet and David Herro from our CMR office, I didn't thank them earlier, they're here tonight, they're the ones that are doing the live streaming, and my friend Michelle Salsman is here tonight, doing live streaming from Facebook, and my aide Debbie Kenny, who's just an angel and keeps me straight, thank you, all of these people, thank you for all your help. All right, David, tell them about the interchange, and they're gonna hold you to the timeline, so make sure you get it right.
Well, as the Commissioner said, this is a state project, it's not a county project. The actual project manager for FDOT is Alan Van, I got a phone number for you, his number is 981-3000.
Right ahead.
Alan Van, 981-3000. Currently, DOT is wrapping up what is the environmental kind of study phase of the project, this would be from the actual interstate at I-110, and essentially the Isaac's Lane, if you're familiar with Isaac's Lane, is a red dirt road that veers directly north, if you're heading on Beulah Road, before you take that jog back to the northwest, to actually the overpass for I-10. Essentially, that red dirt road, the department is doing environmental study from there, south to, south to Pine Forest Road, I'm sorry, to Nine Mile Road. We, the county, though, are actually countering just north of that, from the interstate all the way north to US-29, in environmental study. But in that, the actual interchange aspect of it is probably the most critical and crucial, actually that's where everything will be, everything will be the central point, obviously. And so DOT is hopeful to see the funding, it's in the 150 million-plus range for the interchange, to be shown in their, hopefully their next future five-year work program. If that's the case, then hopefully within the next five or six years, we can see ground, you know, groundbreaking for the interchange, and that'll be a great relief for not only District 1, but also for the entire region.
And for District 5 going north as well.
Yes, sir. So that is the hope.
Thank you, David, I appreciate you being here, man.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, all right. So five, six years, we'll see some dirt turning, we gotta keep the pressure on, like we saw with this little traffic light, that was a million and a half dollars, see how fast that went away, so 150 million, believe me, every year they have a $10 billion work plan, and they don't think about us up in the panhandle, we gotta keep the pressure on, and that's why we gotta have great reps like Alex Andrade after it constantly, because they will pull money quick, and before you know it, it's gone. So, gotta keep the pressure on, because we need that second interchange. All right, we have now reached the point that I think many of you are, I know I've been waiting for, it's public forum, and so I have comment cards, if anyone here wants to speak, fill out a comment card, if you've already filled out a comment card, I'm gonna grab them in no particular order, if you'd like one, yeah, here's my aide Debbie Kenny, she'll, just bring them up, I'm gonna shuffle the deck, and we're gonna, and here's the way it's gonna work, I will either read it, or you can come up and read it yourself, there's a mic right here, I'm gonna go test it right now. Make sure it works. Yep, it works. All right. Yeah, yeah, let's give, I'll give them the opportunity.
Hold on for a second, I got to get an order.
Okay, let me stall for time for a minute.
That's fine, hold on for a second, there's a system here.
All right, just start me out with.
Yeah, I am. Okay, here, so you can start with this one, because there's another one.
All right, okay, see how this works?
See how it works?
Oh boy, I hope I could read this. Oh, okay, yes I can, Vince Odenbrett, is Vince here? Vince, oh, please come on down, come on down. Hit the mic, and thank you for being here tonight, absolutely.
So Commissioner Vince Odenbrett, Alovera for Brunner Circle, which is the new Deer Run subdivision north. Our concern is, right now, we're in Phase 1, has been built, Phase 2 is being cleared, and Phase 3, my understanding, has already been proposed, and the planning stages are signed off. We're looking at approximately 350, 390 homes? 390 homes, but currently, there's only one entrance and exit off of Beulah Road.
Yes, sir.
Our concern is, from Beulah Road and Deer Run Boulevard, all the way to the end of the new subdivision, which is Phase 3, is maybe close to two miles, between a mile and two miles, so with one entrance, the developer doesn't have any plans for a second entrance or exit off of, I think, Oak Haven, around Frank Reader, is supposed to maybe be some type of fire break road for firing EMS, and we're looking at a public access road for number two.
Okay. Vince, I appreciate you being here, I will point out to the crowd, to the audience, I've received probably a dozen similar requests, and because of that, I've reached out to staff and I've got a lot of new data, I've also reached out to representatives of DR Horton, and I've established a dialogue with them, we're trying to, we're trying to work toward a second access point on Beulah Road. Going off of Frank Reader, I don't believe will work, I've driven out there, that's just a very deficient road, but we may be able to, and if you allow me to work on this, on your behalf, we may be able to get a second access point, I'm working that directly with the builders. They want to be good partners, they, there's been a few challenges out there, I'll use that word, right, because I don't want to use the one I get in trouble for, there's been a few challenges out there, right, Vince knows, and Phase 1, so they've got Phase 2 and Phase 3, so we want to be good partners with them, and they want to be good partners with us, and so I am working on that, and I'll stay in touch. I've spoken to several of your counterparts that live in that subdivision, and it's definitely on the radar screen, and DR Horton wants, I just will say this, they, I think they want to work with us on this. But in fairness to DR Horton, I would be remiss if I did not say this, they have met, they have met the code, the strict reading of the code, and what that means is, if fewer than 100 homes, you can have one entrance, and then you can have more than 100 homes in multiple phases, if you have a certain style of entrance, and they do have a second emergency-only access point that they've got, doesn't meet the code, that's why we can't drive in and out every day, but with that said, sometimes just meeting the bare minimum isn't being a good citizen, so we're gonna work with them, and I would just ask for a little bit of time to make that happen, and I certainly will report what I find.
I can look at some of the residents from Deer Run holding up the cards.
Oh, yeah, I will.
The disagree cards there, so.
Oh, whoa, whoa, okay, what was the question? Let's do this, this is good, let's, we'll warm up, we'll warm up. You asked a question, come on, Vince.
Well, I think, I don't think it's so much my question, do, yeah, do the residents agree on the second entrance? Agree or disagree? So are they a good partner with the residents?
Okay. Well, I will duly noted, Vince, I will take this back to them, I'm certain that.
No, I'll be, I'll be the whipping child, that's, yes, ma'am.
So we were looking at a home in Deer Run, they mentioned that there was going to be a second entrance, because that was a concern of ours, when we were involved. We put down a law there, we knew that it was going to be one.
Well, when we, we purchased enclosed them around August of last year, there was, Phase Two was, was just the beginning stages of talk, there was nothing concerning Phase Three. So just like the smart homes, that, that's all new to us as we, as we're in, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, it's okay, no, go ahead.
So that's all new, but those things that they're saying and things that they're told are just, it's all over the place.
Okay, I'll get to that.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And to all the residents out there, yes, thank you, Vince. No, let's go, OLF-8. Okay. To all the residents here that live in Deer Run, and especially particularly the ones that contacted me, you should have got an email back from me if you didn't, I don't know what happened, but I did respond to about 12 of them. And again, that's the news that I'm pointing out. And I will, I will, I'll find a way to disseminate that information back to you, maybe I'll go through Vince. Vince, are you the homeowner's president? If not, that guy, that guy should be the homeowner's president. All right. But I'll, I'll send it back to Vince and he can, we'll make him the homeowner's president. I'll entertain a motion. Okay, just kidding. All right, next up this evening, we're going to talk about OLF-8 and the first speaker's going to be Michael McCormick. Mike? Come on down. Good evening, thank you for being here.
You actually have already answered my question, and that was, are we going to pursue the $30 million restore grant?
Yes, sir, that's in the compromise that we reached with residents and Navy Federal, yeah.
And that was my main concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, see? Thank you, appreciate that. All right. And the next one up, John Kellis, is John here? Ah, here he is. Good evening, John, welcome.
Hi, Jeff. I'm, I'm losing my voice, your prayers are answered.
Oh, boy. Come on, you're not that bad, come on.
Okay, well, I wanted to say a little bit about this public forum and the selection of the master planner thing. I was at the public forum on the 1st of July that Jeff alluded to, and I witnessed three master planners, firms, that all seemed to imply that we can fill the void in Beulah that yearns for these amenities and that seeks an emergency quality of life resolutions and welcomes job creation, all of those together. That it's vital that whichever firm is selected, that they go forth with no elimination of options and no preconceptions, and that community engagement by them is an ongoing thing, that we all get to be involved as it goes along. All that is promulgated in the plan, so I'm puzzled when the Pensacola News Journal, right after that, puts out this article going on about interviewing you and talking about all of the Commerce Park stuff and the no residential stuff. If we're paying these experts a couple million dollars, whoever it's going to be, to do this, certainly that could be the outcome. But if I was applying for a job and one of the guys that was hiring me was saying, this is what I want, I would think that's kind of prejudicial to it and probably was on, the timing wasn't right for the News Journal to be doing that with you. And so.
Their timing is never good, believe me.
Yeah.
Especially for the cartoons.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's no secret that I know how you feel and I'm pretty sure you know how I feel about things we've been.
But John, aren't you happy we got a compromise? Yeah, you've got to speak into the mic, they can't hear you.
Okay.
But aren't you glad, aren't you glad we got to a compromise, though? I mean, I was very proud of the compromise, it was a 5-0 vote. Believe me, those are rare these days on the board, so.
That's true. I just want to emphasize the fact, the fact that with this whole thing, it should stay, like we said, with, you said yourself tonight, no preconceptions.
That's right.
All options on the table.
All options.
But we should stop giving them options before they do their job, let them do their job.
I, I'm with you, I don't disagree. Thank you, John. Thank you. Okay. All right, this is a discussion about citizens with disabilities, Carolyn Grawee, Grawee, is she here? Oh, hey, how are you? Come on down, welcome.
So thank you to you, Commissioner, and to all of our elected officials for trying to do all that we can do for our community. I'm here tonight because, as we all know, this area is continuing to expand in your district and we want to make sure at the Center for Independent Living Disability Resource Center, that we're all being observant and careful and conscious of the fact that right now, we do not have full access to using everything. And so one of those pieces would be to make sure that we have sidewalks that we can get from, from business to business, that we can all spend our money well and wisely in what we want to do, that we have access to the schools, the recreation, et cetera. And as we look at some of the restore money, of course, we're very involved with the Universal Access Project.
Yes.
And trying to make sure that Perdido Key, as well as Pensacola Beach, give everybody those opportunities to be included and participate. We also have coming up our annual ADA celebration. The ADA is now 29 years old, so we shouldn't be thinking of this as an afterthought, it should be at the forefront. When we make things accessible at the outset, then we have everybody being able to participate all the way through. And so as a whole community here in this room, we have a lot of people, maybe not everybody has a visible disability, but we have many people who have invisible disabilities, and how we all treat each other and how we all can be inclusive and make our communities welcoming and inviting is how we can all make our place a better space to be. And so we would like to see continued impact growth that is beneficial to everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, thank you.
I agree, see, I agree with that. Good stuff.
If anybody needs a flyer, we've got them for July 26.
Please, oh, yeah, say that again, so they can hear you.
July 26 is the annual anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA celebration, and the Center for Independent Living Disability Resource Center will be having our event out at the Pensacola Yacht Club. We welcome anybody to participate who would like to. And if you have any concerns or needs, I should have said that earlier, in your district or in any of your homes or your schools, et cetera, businesses out this way, we want to be able to help make sure that our community is accessible. And either myself or some of our staff will be certain to be involved in the process of trying to make sure that we all work at it together.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Peg David, Peg David wants to talk traffic. Is Peg here? Don't see Peg, okay.
I'm over there.
Oh, is she here?
I'm over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peg, yeah, welcome.
Sorry. Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, my name's Peg David, I'm in the Nature Trail subdivision. Deer Run, we appreciate your comments on the second entrance, if you want to talk to us, come, come talk to us about our second entrance. But one of the things I was mentioning, and a couple years ago, we were invited to go down the road to Nine Four, or Nine Mile, to see the FDOT, I think, plans, many of you went to see, for the Nine Mile expansion, et cetera, landscaping, et cetera, very minimal landscaping, I think. But one of the things they talked about back then was, you know, our four lanes. And I was just wondering if there's anything in the palm, I'm sorry, the budget across the fitup, sorry, I'm doing military palm. So anything in the budget for the future planning and the out years for expansion of the four lanes, given the growth and exponential residences and additional, you know.
You're talking about for Nine Mile Road?
Correct.
Not yet, I don't, now I'll have to lean on my expert, David, I don't, I don't know that the traffic count's justified, but David, is there any plans in the out years for six-lane, the four-lane road that we're building right now?
Is there a question for six-lane or something from four-lane?
Pass what we have now, that's not going to be ready until 2020, maybe.
They have design underway, there's no construction budget.
No, no, she's talking about getting it bigger than it is, than, when it's done.
I think she's asking for four-lane from Beulah back.
Actually, actually, from I-10 all the way up to the Alabama border, is there any, you know, additional growth or funding or planning, because we have to do it so many years in advance.
There is planning, there's just no construction budget, that.
Correct. And is that across a five-year effort in terms of budget and?
Design.
Design, and then budget later.
And we have to ride away in construction.
And we know it's state, not county.
It's a state project.
Right. And, and just to follow up, and I'm sorry, I didn't write the rest of that.
No, no.
We know our Navy Federal neighbors certainly have the growth and, you know, we have relatives that work there and a lot of friends and family and things like that, many of you do. Is there any still going back to the state and going back to the, let's say, the administration and looking for an out, not just the Beulah Exchange, but potentially another backward door to the road? We have that in other states, certainly around the country.
Yeah.
Where there's an independent exit and entrance for just those personnel, so if you can elaborate on that, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we, we tried that really hard, the previous president of Navy Federal Credit Union, Deb Calder, myself, we even got Matt Gates involved, and one bureaucrat in Tallahassee said no to it. It was an, obviously, it was a smart idea, it was like literally a stone's throw between the back of their property and the truck exit, very little traffic, it would have been a very, but the bottom line is, it actually isn't done. They haven't done it anywhere in the country through a truck stop or a rest stop, and so they, they said no, even though it was common sense. It was before we, I better not say that. It was, we, we just could not get to a decider, let's put it this way, we had a lot of bureaucrats that couldn't get off the script, but I, I feel your pain because it was ridiculous and Navy Federal tried, Congressman Gates got involved, and we just got unelected, unaccountable bureaucrat said no. And that's what happened with that, but we did try, we did think of that. Okay, we're going to move these a little quicker, guys, try and, if you could, keep it to a minute, we're trying to keep this from going over two hours in consideration to our principle. So next up, Carol T. Bay. Good evening.
I was glad to see that you had a conservation area along the river here on the map.
Oh, yeah.
I was, and I'm, because I'm thinking of the whole watershed this goes, this is a Perdido watershed, I believe, so it's, we have to think about the whole watershed, it's not just the Beulah area that's affected by all this construction.
Yes, ma'am.
So I was wondering if any conservation buffers could be put along the creeks, 11 Mile Creek, Eight Mile Creek.
I think that would be a Chip's Kirshfeld question. Chip, do you want to answer that question? Because there's a lot of things we can do, but he's the man who knows the ins and outs.
Thank you for that question. The Water Management District, as you probably know, has purchased a lot of the land along the banks of the Perdido River and the riparian zones. One of the projects that we're designing right now is to do a floodplain restoration project along 11 Mile Creek, and there will be some areas that will be put into conservation along those lines. As you know, those buffer zones, those riparian buffer zones and those flood zones are very important to set aside to prevent future flooding.
I agree.
So that is something that we look at, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. All right. We still have a number, we still have a number of speakers here, so if you guys will just allow me to make a change on the fly, before we lose too much of a quorum, I really want to run through a list of questions and that way we can use these cards. We do have a few speakers, we'll hear all the speakers, but this will take just a few minutes and we will be able to, Debbie's going to be here and she's going to take, write down the responses, but if everyone could grab their card, I'm going to, I'm going to just go through some of these questions. And I'll just start by saying, I'm doing this just as a test to see if it works well. I've seen other, online, other town halls, it's not my original idea, but other town halls have done it, and it gives me good feedback. I mean, it's just a heuristic, it's certainly not scientific, and obviously, you know, I, we're a constitutional republic, we're not a pure democracy, that would be anarchy. So, you know, I take everything, I do the research and I, you elect me and then I make the vote, and it may not always be, I've sat in rooms full of people, wanted one thing done and we ended up voting for the other because it was the greater good. But with all that said, I am very interested in your input, so if everyone's with me on this, would you like town hall meetings more often? Okay, well, that's almost unanimous. If it, if it stays this way the rest of the night, this is going to be a pretty easy deal. I don't think it will, though. Would you attend more frequent town hall meetings? All right, wow, okay, that's good. All right. Michelle, would you come this way and film that way? Yeah, let's see, that way we get this on the live stream for the folks. By the way, we're live streaming this on Facebook so that constituents who could not make it tonight can participate in real time at their computers and on their smartphones. I do that when we do our monthly coffees as well. The next question, the biggest issue in this part of District One is traffic. Now, be careful, because the next one might be something you think is more important, but right now, that looks pretty important. The biggest issue in this area of District One is stormwater. Hmm, okay. I know they're both important, but, no, it's definitely.
Everybody voting? Do that again, please.
Okay, if you think stormwater is the number one issue. That's interesting to me. Okay, very interesting. All right. Do you support property rights of owners who own private property? Interesting. It's, it's kind of an open question. All right. Do you support zoning and ordinances to keep property development orderly in a community?
See that?
Yeah, these guys are very interested, that's the planning and zoning staff over there. Agreement, okay, very good. Do you support an overlay district where more rigorous standards are applied than other areas of the county?
For here?
For here, for this part of District One, for the, okay. An overlay district, should we give them a discussion about an overlay district? Horace, Horace is looking the other way. Come on, Horace, tell them, give them 30 seconds, you've got to speak into the mic, though.
Horace, Horace.
Yeah, speak into the mic. They may not know what an overlay district is.
An overlay district, I got a loud voice. An overlay district is a district that has special requirements far beyond the regular requirements. So for example, if, if, if the zoning allows for red cars and the overlay said that every car got to be blue, then guess what? Every car got to be blue because it is, that takes precedence over the underlying zoning. That is an overlay district.
Okay, now while you're up there, tell them the difference between that and a master plan, because my next question's about a master plan for this area. I'm trying to figure out what is less, what, give a brief definition of a master plan for those who may not know.
A master plan is where you take, where you take the citizen's input from the community, like you, that's why the citizen survey is very, very important for you to fill out. We'll hire a ser, we'll hire someone, a professional come in and they'll take all of the comments and they will design the master plan according to the citizen's input. Then you got to go through the regular process with road designs, commercial, residential, all those will be consolidated to one master plan. Now with the master plan, you must have the implementing regulations, and that is the Land Development Code or some type of architectural control standards. Having a master plan with no standards, you really don't have no plan. And you want your master plan not just to sit on a shelf for 20 years, you want it to come to fruition, especially in our lifetime.
Thank you. Well, that's pretty good in that short period of time. I've got two questions back to back, we're going to, what?
Who else besides the citizens have input to the master plan?
The master plan is primarily, it's a citizens-driven plan, yes.
Yeah, you can get the mic.
It is a citizens-driven plan, yes, the, the master plan staff, we will be taking input, will be looking at it wholeheartedly, but it's really primarily a citizens-driven plan. If it's something that you know that you cannot do, of course, we're going to be there to, to, to make adjustments to that, but it's really a citizens-driven plan.
And again, guys, this is not scientific, just a thumbnail sketch of where we're at on it. An example of a master plan would be the one we did at Perdido Key.
Yes.
Out at Perdido Key, they had citizens involved, they did charrettes and they came up, and it was already an area that had some, had some, a lot of development already, and this was just put over the top and it defines the development going forward. So out here in Beulah, we're really built out, but there's a lot of folks that, that believe in doing a master plan to kind of ensure that the growth is managed intelligently and that it's attractive and the right kind of growth. And so that's why, I know it's confusing, especially if you're not real versed in planning lingo, but I wanted to kind of throw that out there because these questions will also also be on your survey that you receive. So, maybe between now and then, you Google it, read about it, contact my office, I'll put you in contact with staff, but, so I will. So, which one of those is more onerous on the property owner? Which, which of those is more restrictive on the person that owns property? Well, I'm asking the pro here, so he can...
It, it depends, it depends upon the requirements. It depends upon the design. It depends upon what the citizens want. Both of those can have the same impact. It's very, very important that the survey, get it done now, because it's hard for everyone to come and start doing the master planning, and then at the end, someone come to try to... That causes problems for everybody. So, be involved now. Come to the meetings. It's very, very important. Your voice will count.
Thank you very much, Horace. I appreciate that, and maybe I'll, maybe I'll skip these questions for now. Maybe we'll come back to these at the next town hall. Here we go. Do you support mixed-use development of the helicopter field, OLF-8, which may include residential developments? Well, you tell me. It's a, I'm looking at a sea of red.
I think it's unanimous.
Yeah. Well, not totally unanimous, there's a couple of greens in there. Couple of greens, okay. I, no, I appreciate that.
Okay, so the percentage of agree was about...
Eighty percent.
Agree was about 20%.
Oh, agree was maybe 10%, maybe.
Okay.
I got to help her with arithmetic over here.
I'm doing my columns in terms of agree.
Okay. All right. Moving forward, do you support our local volunteer firefighters from Station 2 remaining in Beulah? Everyone pay attention to that. That's fantastic. Volunteer firefighters serving their community. That's a 100%. That's 100%. Thank you. Thank you. I'm good with that. Will you be supportive of an increase in the fire MSBU on property owners to add more career firefighters? Whoa, that's... What's going on here? I think the microphone agrees. It's a mixed bag. I see a lot of red over here, a couple of greens in the back. I'd say it's 50/50. What do you all think?
About 50/50.
About 50/50, okay. I appreciate your honesty. And remember, this is voluntary, if you don't, you don't have to do it if you don't. But it really does help me out. Will you be supportive of an increase in the fire MSBU on property owners? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I thought we had a different switch on it. Okay. Do you support the county's four cents per gallon gasoline tax to help fund ECAT? I think that the majority disagree with that. Okay.
About 20% maybe?
I think it's 80/20 disagree. 80/20. Thank you for that. Would you support ECAT bus service out here to this part of District 1? Do you want it out here? Okay. Well, we agree.
Okay, they want it, but they don't want to pay for it.
Scientific. They want it, but they don't want to pay for it. Okay. That's not scientific, I'm sorry.
It's got to be efficient.
No, I'm with you guys. And we, and look, we've had a lot of challenges with ECAT, so, but we are working on that. Okay. Do you support the Beulah interchange project that is in the planning stages, which will add an additional interstate access point from Beulah Road? Yes. Thank you. Thank you. I was at a meeting two years ago, and they, they wanted to put, they wanted to scalp me when I discussed this. I'm serious. I had to run out of that thing. Had to keep the car, backed the car up and kept it running. They wanted my head on a stick. All right. This is probably, probably not a fair question, but I'm going to ask it. I support, I support Navy Federal Credit Union's expansion in Escambia County, because they're a great addition to our community. Well, we got, we got one disagree. Thank you. No, they're, they are great. And the jobs they bring, let me just tell you, amazing. Okay. Do you support the county pursuing jobs for Escambia County residents via economic development? I know I do. Navy Federal, ST, it's a lot of green out there, guys. I like it. See, I'm, I'm not going to say what I want to say. I'm not going to be Mr. Nice. Okay. Here we go. This is a very important question to me, guys, and please allow me a moment of personal privilege. Our local newspaper, the Pensacola News Journal, is in step with our community's values. Take a, take a panoramic picture of that. Take a panoramic picture of that. It's 95%.
90% agreeing and 90%...
Where you at, Kevin? Thank you for that. I appreciate that. That's a moment of personal privilege. After the 15th cartoon, I got to do something, right? I believe what I read in the local newspaper, the Pensacola News Journal.
Do you read it? Is that what you said?
No, I said, I believe what I read in the local newspaper, the Pensacola News Journal. Lot of red out there, guys. Lot of red. I appreciate that.
Do they subscribe?
Well, I don't, I don't, I really don't care about that. I would support, okay, here's one we can all agree with. I think, I think, I think we could all agree with. I would support having more dining restaurant choices out here in Beulah. Please, please, come on. This should be 100%. We got Tom Thumb, that's it. That's all we got. Tom Thumb. It's, oh, we got to disagree.
Okay, hold on, we had, we had a turn.
Yeah, okay, see, okay.
Somebody turned.
Okay. There's two people that disagree with that, but the rest of us want more options. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. We're almost done here. And guys, I really appreciate this. I don't think this has ever happened in the history of Escambia County, so this is a good, we're making history. Did I skip 19?
Yeah.
No, I'm on it right now.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I'm over here. I would support a second park in Beulah north of Nine Mile Road. Park.
Another park.
Another park in Beulah north of Nine Mile Road. I know, that's an easy one. That's, I shouldn't have thrown that in there. Who's going to say no to that? I got one person back there.
I got two.
I got two no's. Okay, well, 99.99999% want it. I would support having more, wait, I already, sorry, forget that. Okay, here's the, here's the final question tonight, and this is important, because I've been lobbied to add this, and I want to get a sense of what people think, and I want to know if people understand it. First, a show of hands, who understands what impact fees are on developers? Show of hands, if you understand what that means. Okay, so some folks do, some folks don't. Essentially, that means before you come in and build, the county will, will assess a fee based upon the impact that you have on the infrastructure and things of that nature. They do it. The schools, yeah. Well, that was concurrency.
Highways.
Highway, yeah. Other parts of the country, they do it. So, I'm going to ask the question here. Do you support impact fees being levied on developers? Wow. Take a video of this. I, I think, I don't see a single, I don't see a single red in here.
100%.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, guys, I appreciate your honesty. Give yourselves a round of applause. That's the first time that's ever happened in Escambia County. And it won't be the last time, because that was a lot of fun. Thank you. Okay, we're going to get back to the comments, though. We have a few more comments, and we can, and we can keep this within two hours. And again, I appreciate everyone being here, your patience. Next up, oh, okay, we've got questions about the road swap between Perdido Key Drive and Beulah Road. So, we've got a number of these questions. So, Mike McCormick, do you want to come up and ask the question?
I can ask it from here.
But I can't hear you. You got to do it here, so, I'm sorry.
Oh, you can.
Or do you want to hear? Okay, you stay there, I'll read it to you. What are the, what are the conditions you require to follow through with a road swap? You're asking me that question. Well, I will tell you, there's a number of safety issues with Beulah Road right now. The section between Mobile Highway and Nine Mile Road was recently repaved. But I drive that road a lot, and my kids drive it, and it's not safe, because there's major crowning issues. If you go off the road, you can lose, it's very narrow, which, which the egg, I'm sorry, I did not say that. Which certain people, traffic engineers, will say, but you want real narrow roads, because that makes people go slow. But not out here. They go fast. And so, I got a truck coming at me, and I got to go off the road to avoid him. So, I want shoulders, I want sidewalks, I want safe roads. And I'm, my concern is, we've got some safety enhancements that David and I are working on, and I'm going to, after we get the fire station built, I'm going to, I'm going to put some of my discretionary money into that, because I can make it happen quick, just like the lights, if I'm in control of it. If I'm at the mercy of the state, and they're shifting priorities which really gravitate south, right? So, that's, that's what it is. I want to make sure that we are going to get the safety issues, so I'm, I'm working on that right now. And I don't want to tip my hand too much, but the language that's in there right now is insufficient for my support. That, is that newsworthy? Yeah, it's insufficient. It needs to be better. If not, I'll pull it out, and we'll just keep that part from Nine Mile Road to Mobile Highway, a local road, and I'll fund it myself, because my kids drive that road, your kids drive that road. That road is not safe. Eight Mile Creek, Klondike, same thing. We're going to go right down the line, we're going to fix them. They're unsafe roads, right? But that, I hope that answers your question. I hope it was unambiguous. I tried to be as much as I could without saying words that will get me in trouble. Rita Kershaw. Oh, okay, good. That's easy. Sean Bullington, you've got a, man, you wrote me a book. Look, War and Peace up here. Come on.
You're doing an excellent job. I commend you.
Well, I'm trying. Look, I'm getting through all the comments.
You did. I like what you did with this approach, with the, with the agree and everything. And you've already answered quite a few things on the road concurrency, the road swap. So, I guess now, it would be, if this committee that we had to name the bridge was so successful, why don't we have committees now for public safety and for infrastructure? Is that doable?
Well, I'm working on a committee right now that I'll bring to this Thursday's meeting. I said I would do it last month, it was actually covered in the paper, for, for an oversight of our local option sales tax. We have that in the school district, the half-cent, they call it the half-cent sales tax watchdog committee. Some of my counterparts on the county commission didn't like that terminology, but essentially, I'm bringing a committee recommendation this Thursday. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, because remember, I'm not King Jeff. I got to get three votes to make anything happen, two more votes. So, I like committees. I, you know, the committee up here works, I've suggested committees in the past, so I would, I would not be opposed to it. But you got to get, you got to get me two more votes, so that's how that works.
I'll be working it. I'll be working it. And then, you're doing an excellent job with this meeting, and you're doing an excellent job trying to get the master plan and everything developed.
Thank you.
I agree. I agree.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, no, I'll give you the props.
Wait, who put the red card up?
But we'd like to add in, I'm on D-5. But Beulah does affect me greatly with the traffic. And I just would like for you and the staff to allow D-5, especially in the south side, to have a, just a little bit more of a say-so, because our traffic is affected, and our restaurants, so forth, everybody has to come over here. That's why I agree on almost everything that y'all need over here, which is basically me, because the fire department can sometimes make it over to the Kingsfield roadside faster than the Cantonment side when they're busy.
A couple of things on District 5, we're, we are cooperating. The board of county commissioners set aside a significant sum of money for Kingsfield Road to, to create a new bypass that goes from Beulah Road all the way over, and eliminates those 90-degree turns that everyone goes the back door up to Ransom. My son went to Ransom, so I've done that road, and people flying at you, flying into, that's a very dangerous road. And so, Commissioner Barry and myself, we, you know, we coordinate. But again, we're in our silos, but we work it, and the board voted for money for that, so that project's going. Another very important thing that many of you all probably get stuck in, when you get off the interstate at Pine Forest Road and you want to go north, right, there's one lane going north, but there's two lanes going south. The Transportation Planning Organization, which I served as chairman, have just rolled off, we just reprioritize that. That thing's moving, because it's got the support of myself, Commissioner Barry, really, it's got unanimous support. It's something that they should have done when they did it, they didn't do it, but it's about a $10 million project, so we're, but that's moving, too, because that will move traffic quicker. That's a big bottleneck point right there, Pine Forest Road, that's just that, you know, one and a half miles between the interstate. So, we're working that. That's, that's cooperation.
Excellent, yeah. That's great, and thank you on that support.
I know that's one of your projects.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, with the road concurrency, the impact fees, would that, if you had enough of that impact fees, would that help with improving Beulah Road even if there wasn't a road swap?
I want to talk about concurrency.
Okay, I'll let you go with that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Sean. Concurrenty is very similar to impact fees in that, and we used to have, when I was on the school board, for instance, we had concurrency. It was in the land develop, it was in, at the state level. And it was, was mandated that the school board, the city's century, city, Pensacola, and the county have an interlocal agreement, and we all cooperated on development as development was planned for Escambia County. And so, they would have to send it to the school district and say, look, you want to build another 200 house subdivision right next to Ransom Middle, the best middle school, you know, the most popular middle school. The school board had a say in that, and we could, you know, and, but that went away. In 2011, the state took concurrency away. And I think it was a function of the recession that we were in at that time, a lot of pressure from home builders around the state that did not want that extra layer of bureaucracy. We had a brand-new governor at that time who did not want it. And so, what happened, the way we were sold on the school board was, we said, well, the county is going to keep concurrency in the land development code. So, we saw it go away at the state level, and it went to the county, and that was in 2011. In 2013, and Horace is smiling, he knows what happened, the board of county commissioners removed concurrency from the land development code, right? So, then it was the wild, wild west, right? And so, now we have, well, exactly. So, and look, some genies, you can't put them back in the bottle, it's very difficult. I mean, you know, I said facetiously, they want my head on a stick. It's going to be a heavy lift, and I'm going to, I'm going to require, if the citizens want concurrency back, it's going to be a heavy lift. There's going to be people in red shirts, this color, by the hundreds coming to our meetings, you know, and they're not going to be happy with us. But I'm willing to bring it, because it's the right thing to do. I liked it when it was in, when we had a say at the school district. They couldn't build a ton of stuff and overcrowd our schools, there was road concurrency that was in there. None of it's there anymore. We don't have that protection. So, you know, I've been in this job two and a half years, and I can tell you all, I want to do these things, but it requires more than just one person, and sometimes there's constituencies that do not want it. So, just be prepared. If you've, if you've seen some of the stuff that happens in Santa Rosa County right now in Pace, that's a, you know, that's a harbinger of what could happen here. But I'm not afraid of them. They can't eat me, right? They can try and, I'll do what's right, because I live here, too, right? And I, this growth that we have sustained out here, we can't, we can't, it's unsustainable, right? The infrastructure has not kept up. The only way you do that is smart planning, and a lot of that has to be done on the front end. And a lot of that means sometimes you got to say no to people that want to do things, right? It doesn't make you popular with them, but anyway, that's what I wanted to say about concurrency. But I've just, we've discussed it at the, at the board of county commissioners, and right now, there isn't a whole lot of appetite for doing it. I'll bring it up again, because I think it's, it's a worthwhile conversation. But I think it's important that everyone knows the state did away with it, and then the county did away with it in 2013, long before I got here. So, to put it back in the bottle is going to be a heavy lift, but I'm willing to do it. Thank you for the question, Sean. We're down, we're down to the last two, and hey, I appreciate, oh, I'm sorry, got one more.
Yeah, but save it for last.
Okay, saving for it last. Okay. I appreciate you all hanging with me. Okay, Rita Kershaw. She's gone, okay, good, that's another one down. Mike McCormick, wow, you're wearing me out, Mike. You got another question? Okay. What are the conditions you, oh, oh, you already did that. That one's already done. I got a blank one from Kelly Moore.
Because he wants to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead, Kelly.
I promise I won't yell at you.
No, no, please, please.
Anyway, I live in District 2, and Jeff, I could ask you a question, are you in favor of the road swap?
I am, on certain conditions, as I've discussed.
Okay, how many out here, 'cause see the red, red...
You want, okay.
How many y'all wanna block road swap? Or road swap?
Yep, we're gonna have to tell them, because Kelly, they don't know. Here's, here's the, here's the plan. David, come up here and explain, set the, we gotta set the table, or else they're just, they're not gonna have the facts. Will you tell them how much road in Perdido Key, and how much road here, and what we're doing? This is what the proposal is. Here's the expert.
The expert? Yeah, the, the request from the county is to, for the Florida Department of Transportation to consider swapping State Road 292, Perdido Key Drive, from the south side of Theobars Bridge, all the way to the Alabama state line, with the existing asphalt at Beulah Road from Mobile Highway to the interstate, essentially that Isaacs Lane that I mentioned earlier, where the interchange will be constructed. That's the existing asphalt for asphalt swap. It's about 6.2 miles on Perdido Key Drive, for about 2.8 miles or ish for Beulah Road. The department, though, is considering, assuming the actual, what I mentioned earlier, the county's environmental study, and all the subsequent phases of design, right-of-way and construction for the, what we're calling the Beulah Interchange Connector Project, or the US-29 Connector Project, essentially as a roadway that would be constructed from where the interchange will be constructed, north, all the way to US-29, in some area, possibly around the US Quintet Road area. So, existing asphalt for asphalt doesn't sound very equitable, but the future development of the northern construction of that interchange connector from the interchange north, the US-29, would be, would far exceed from an asphalt perspective, the department would assume that responsibility.
Okay. So, is everyone clear? We're, we're, we're giving away a smaller amount that we're taking responsibility for, essentially.
So the county is swapping a road with the state?
That's, that's the plan, and there's...
Right.
And there's, and there's discussions about it, and there's pros and cons, but...
So how many red or green now? What would y'all...
Yeah, okay, here, let's just ask the question, Kelly. Based upon what you've just heard, how many would support this road swap?
Right.
They don't understand.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough issue, guys.
Well, here, I just want you to, to everybody that, agree or disagree, the issue is, you've got, if we, everybody knows about hurricanes, and that's a barrier island with a barrier road.
Perdido Key.
Perdido Key Road. If we get hit with a Michael, which we almost did...
It's a state road now.
It's a state road now, which means the state of Florida is responsible to rebuild it. If you swap your roads, guess who's gonna be responsible, you know we're gonna have a hurricane, to pay for it?
To pay for Perdido Key.
To pay for Perdido Key Road to be redone, because it'll be a county road then. I don't think people in District 1 wanna pay for a project in District 2.
Nope, I don't, I don't think they do either. I appreciate it, thank you, Kelly. Exactly, and right now, just so everyone knows, we, we own the road in Pensacola Beach, Via de Luna it goes, so, I mean, it's not like it's unprecedented, but there's, there's pros and cons to both sides of it. I, I hear what you're saying, and, and, you know, the way it's presented, it, it does look like something that wouldn't be supported. Our, our final, second-to-last speaker, road swap, Melissa Pino, you're recognized. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Bregash, Melissa Pino, D-2. And I told you I was gonna be asking you about this, so it's not a gotcha.
No, no.
You mentioned the language in the road swap. What language? Where is it? Where are the documents? Why aren't they online? Why haven't they been on a TPO agenda? I mean, you heard me get up and ask about this months and months ago at a TPO meeting, and say, "Why, this project is being planned in the background."
Right.
We all hear rumblings. Do you remember how you learned about the project?
Well, I heard a rumor about it, and I asked the staff about it.
Right.
But I will say, and I hear what you're saying, but here's the critical key, this county, there's a lot going on, and the staff, there were informal conversations and draft language, and, you know, if, 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 if we have so many cooks in the kitchen, every, and I'm all for transparency, believe me, I'm Mr. Transparency, that's why I have the coffees, that's why I have these, I constantly, I make myself available, but at some point, the staff has to be allowed to do their work without being second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth guest.
And I wasn't, I wasn't speaking to county staff, I was speaking to DOT and TPO, who are famous for their, you know, challenge, little, some challenges with transparency. And when I first spoke about it at the meeting, and brought everybody's attention to it, because there was a Facebook post that went up, and that's kind of when everybody realized it. First thing I said was, "Hey, if I'm Bregash, I'm thinking about making that deal all day long," because of course, of course you would.
See why I love these things?
But what can you do to help us with the transparency on it?